Welcome everyone who is here joining us and those that are joining us on the video stream. All right, we want to begin with everyone rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And Kelly, would you lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, the next item on the board or on the agenda is comments from the audience, and we had no one that requested to speak this evening, so we'll move on. Next, we have any requests from the board to remove items from the consent agenda. Did anyone on the board have something they wanted to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Next is to approve the agenda as proposed.
I move approval of the agenda as proposed.
Do I have a second? Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as proposed. We are ready for the vote. Motion passes. The next item is the reading of our school district vision statement. And Cassie, would you read our vision statement, please?
Empowering all learners to embrace and be inspired to realize their potential.
Thank you. Next is item 6.1, a time for board members and administration to identify any items on the agenda that could be considered conflict of interest. Did we have any conflict of interest declarations? Okay, now we're submitted, so we'll move on. Next, we are to 7.1, the best award recipients. And I believe both of our recipients are here this evening. They're a little easy to recognize. So at this point, I will call on Superintendent Schultz to recognize our best award winners this meeting.
This is why I'm a superintendent and not a counselor. All right, we're going to have you both just stand up here. Right here is awesome. So in the nomination, it says, Darcie Malcolm and Teresa Howell. I'm so happy and excited to nominate them for the Brookings Best Award in recognition of their unmatched energy, clearly, creativity, and kindness as a drop-off Wonder Woman at Hillcrest Elementary. Every afternoon, these two turn what can often be a hectic, stressful part of the day into a bright, welcoming experience for students and parents alike. Whether donning blow-up costumes, coordinating matching outfits, or simply offering a warm smile and wave, no matter the weather, they create an atmosphere of joy that sets the tone for the transition home. Their ability to connect with children and parents is nothing short of genius, transforming card drop-off from a rushed routine into a shared moment of laughter and community. Countless afternoons are made better because of their commitment to making everyone feel seen, valued, and appreciated. This really shows those little things matter, showing up with enthusiasm and a touch of fun and taking the time to care that make the biggest difference. Your daily efforts have not only enhanced the drop-off experience, but have also strengthened the sense of belonging at Hillcrest. It's for these reasons and so many more that I enthusiastically nominate them for the Brookings Best Award.
This is only one of the many costumes they have and wear. I live close to Hillcrest. They do. Thank you very much, ladies, and thanks for sharing the fun with us tonight, too. Okay, the next item, and this is one of our favorites, is when we have student presentations. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation from the Envirothon Club, and they had a very successful summer, so we're anxious to hear about this in their presentation. So welcome. Please come forward, sit up here in front, and then we would like you to each introduce yourselves and tell us what year you are in school. And then you can begin your presentation. You need to push the button until it's green, and then speak close to the microphone so that everyone can hear. All right.
Hi, I'm Mallory Wells. I'm a senior at Brookings High School.
I'm Nana Jamal. I'm a senior at Brookings High School.
I am Brielle Smatana, and I'm also a senior at Brookings.
Lisa Bahi, I am at the Mickelson Middle School, but I help with the Envirothon at the high school as kind of an advisor, I guess, since it's just a club. But these guys are going to talk about the Envirothon. We stumbled upon this a couple of years ago, and we went out to Rapid City and did it a try, gave it a try, and said we'd do the best we can. And that first year, they did win. And so last summer, they went to Geneva, New York, and participated at the national level. And then this year, they repeated, and this year, it was up in Calgary, Canada. So I'll let them talk about their experience.
Okay, so first off, we have our state competition, and we typically start studying for that around March because it is at the end of the year. There are five disciplines in which we have to study. There's forestry, wildlife, aquatic ecology, soil and land use, and then there's also a current issue. This year's current issue had to do with fires and wildfires in the Black Hills. We compete against teams across South Dakota, and Brookings, this last year, we got first place and second place for the 2025 state competition.
All right, so as Bahi mentioned, our nationals was in Canada. We had a week-long excursion in which there was an arrival day, a learning day, where we got taken out on sites by experts, and we got to learn about certain disciplinaries, for example, foresteries. They took us out and helped us identify trees, measure trees, and other basic things. We have a test day where we're taking on other sites, and we repeat the process of a learning day, but as a test. We have a fun day. This year, we went to Banff National Park, which was super cool. We got to walk some trails up there and take some gondola rides. We have two presentations days, one in which we are in a room for six hours, working on our presentation that we will present the next day. We're presented with a problem we have to solve, and we're given a bunch of papers to solve that problem. And then finally, we have an awards day. So Canada was super special this year because it was Indigenous-focused. We got to learn about the Indigenous culture of the Canadian people, and that was super cool. We also, as I said, we get to connect with several experts. So there's a lot of people that devote their time to this, and we get to learn so much from them. And we also get to connect with our peers that have the same interest in environmental science as we do. There's teams from all over the states, several provenances in Canada, as well as several teams from China.
So Envirothon has actually inspired a lot of members on our team, especially our previous seniors. So we had Marilyn Lopez, and she's attending SESU, majoring in business economics, but she still plans to volunteer for Envirothon next year, and she's even taking some environmental courses. And then we had Madeline Birkenhoff, who's attending UC San Diego and majoring in biology. And she told us that Envirothon was a big contributing factor to helping her get into college because she was able to reference it on her essays, and it also inspired her major choice, which is biology.
And yeah, so we have a lot of big goals for Envirothon, but we especially want to make sure we get to connect with more experts and learn even more. And then we want to bring our love to environmental science to other people and gain club interest. And we'd also like to host classes for younger students to start that love for environmental science, even at a younger age, and helping others with their knowledge.
And just kind of a side note, the going up to Canada was all paid for by the Butte County Conservation District. And so everything was funded through them for them to be able to make that trip up there.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Great, it's so exciting. Can you say, when you say competition, are you competing against presentations? Is that where the competition is?
Okay, so yeah, our competition is over a presentation over the current issue, but it's also over the four other disciplinaries where we take tests. So these tests can look several different ways. Some are multiple choice, written answers, it's like several things like that. So it's just a whole accumulation of proving our knowledge.
So throughout the different disciplines, we then assign each person a discipline to study over the next year or months. And so that makes the distribution of work a lot easier. And then we all kind of become experts in our field in that own way. So it's really educational in that sense.
Okay, how about all of you? Are you considering careers related to environmental sciences? Just since you're all seniors, if you want to share your future plans, we would love that.
So I am considering a career in like environmental protection that results, like similar to governmental legislation when it comes to environmental protection in that sense.
I'm still undecided, but I think Envirothon definitely influenced me in like seeing what I like to do and stuff like that.
So I personally, I'm more of an English person. I've never really liked science, but when I started Envirothon, like I really started to enjoy science. So it helped open like the other side of that for me. And well, and there's a way that English and science can be combined, where we met an expert in Calgary where she was a grant writer for like asking for money for conservation things, and I think that might be a super interesting thing to look into.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. That's awesome, and congratulations on your. The next item talks about a facilities update, and that will come in our reports, so we'll move on. Now we'll hear from each of our committees. All board members, I'm going to say this for the benefit of our college students that are here, all board members are also are part of committees that are a permanent part of our obligations and responsibilities as board members. So we'll start with the performance oversight committee.
We are going to be meeting next week and the following week, so we've got a couple meetings coming up.
Facilities and construction.
We're going to meet soon, maybe even tomorrow. And we haven't met recently, so but we're scheduled now as the school term is, or facility functions we would need to look at.
And right now, we're looking at some things at the high school. We need to do some work on our science labs, and that's something that's under consideration. So we do have a meeting tomorrow scheduled with the city to also work on some things in regards to facilities and construction. Policy and governance, Terry.
We're waiting on some information on a couple policies, so nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. School finance. Similar to, go ahead, Wes.
We have a budget, so we don't need to meet for the short term. In fact, just today, I dug out the budget, looked at some numbers. So we'll see what's, what happens the next 60 days, whether we get Stacy coming to us with some options for our plan for the next fiscal year.
And then reports from ad hoc committees. Mental Health Coalition, Cassie, was there anything to report there?
As we know, we are looking at lifting up mental health this next month, and you should check out lots of websites online to check out all the events we have going on. There's going to be an event at the Dakota Nature Park, and especially with United Way. They have lots of initiatives going on right now. You'll notice that the signs in everyone's yards, You're Not Alone, are up around town, so make sure that you check out any literature on mental health. And when we discussed it in our last meeting, which would have been a while ago, we're not meeting since there's so many events right now, talking about students and access to social media and electronics was a big topic. And obviously, as a school district, we had a lot to say there, and later, we'll hear about the already seen positive influence of that.
School District Foundation, Kelly, do you have anything to report?
Yep, I just finally got on their meeting agenda and schedule, so they got those to me for that last meeting. So and then the Brookings Child Care Collaborative that I sit on will meet on Wednesday of this month, of this week.
And I'm on the Communities That Care Grant Initiative, and that is also meeting this week on Thursday, so we'll be involved with that as well. General Board Comments. I also wanted to just give a shout out when you talk about national mental health awareness to our Hope Squad and our peer helpers at our school district that are such a vital part of working with our students with mental health, as well as our counselors. I also received a phone call today, and I want to give a shout out to our, a lot of our schools. I had a guardian call me, who is a guardian to non-English-speaking students, their English is their second language, and she enrolled them in our, one of our elementary schools, the middle school, and she also has a student at the high school that she's guardian for. And she just went on and on about how much help they received, how they felt welcomed, and how they were just so excited to go to school in Brookings. That's the kind of call you want to get, and I was so happy to hear from her. I just want to give a shout out to all the staff at Dakota Prairie, the middle school, and at the high school for that comment. Board members, any other comments?
I'd say looking forward to homecoming for the district coming up starts.
Yeah, and so we're all wearing our buttons with the theme. Okay, then it's time for administrative reports, and we receive administrative reports from each of the administrators in our district. So we will start with the superintendent's report and Dr. Schultz.
It's that time of year where I could spend a lot of time, so I'm not, I'm going to try to, and you have my original report, and so I'm not even going to touch on a lot that's in there. There's, there's just so many things going on. The biggest thing that I want to, to talk about or to give credit to, I don't, I don't know as a superintendent of a school our size how to thank a collective group of students and staff in the way that our current high school needs to be thanked. We implemented the yonder pouches, and Lois did call and ask us to demonstrate and put Wes's phone away. So she does not like when he texts during meetings, so.
He turned it off.
He turned it off. So for those who don't know, this is our first, this, in the fall, our high school implemented the yonder pouch, which our students in high school have their phones in the yonder pouch all day other than during lunch. And I will say, I, I really wasn't sure what to expect. In most communities and most school communities, year one of this is hard. It's hard because it's an attachment. It's hard for a lot of reasons. There's always questions about, well, what if there's an issue and my child needs to get a hold of me? And it's hard to have all of those conversations of, well, the reality is, that might make you feel better as a mom that your child could get a hold of you, but we know they're much safer listening to the directives of the, of the police department, of their teacher, that sort of thing. However, I wasn't sure what to expect on year one of the yonder pouches because I know what's happened in most schools. And so day one came and awaited and awaited, nothing, nothing. Day two came, that was Friday, still nothing, nothing. I called, I called Zach up, and I said, are you just not sharing what's going on, Mr. Thomas? And I will say that for a, for an initiative such as this, our student body have taken advantage of it and gone, yeah, we probably didn't, we wouldn't have voted for this for the most part. But in one class particularly, the kids and the, and the teacher kind of went back and forth, who had argued a lot over the cell phone last year. Because the reality is, when we just say, lots of schools say, we don't allow cell phones in the classroom, that's hard. That is hard because it is a dopamine addiction. Kids struggle when that, they can feel that little beep, like, oh, Lord, the world's going on around me, and I can't check it. Sometimes it's, it's adults communicating, all the things. But our student said to the teacher who said, what are you going to do now that you don't have your phone? And she said, well, I'm going to lock in because you're locking it up. And our students took this stance of, we know it's good for us, we're good with it. And they have just done an amazing job, and I don't know how to thank them. So this is my public thank you, number one to the student body, because this could be hard, especially year one, and they have not, they have made it so much better than I ever could imagine. And I'm just like, I'm so proud of them. Every time somebody asks me, I don't know how to say thank you or how proud I am of those students. It's hard for schools who just want to say we don't let them have it. Teachers are still having to make those decisions, kind of argue with kids, and if kids have access to them, it's just a bit more of a battle. Our kids, our staff at the high school did something that a lot of schools don't even have the, they don't have the, they don't have the guts to try it. And truthfully, I mean, there were years I probably might have been one of them. I know how big and how hard this is. So our high school administration, the staff, the students, if you see them, you need to thank them because they have made us so proud. So that's, and now, I don't really know how to work this great, Wes, but now your phone, Lois, since you're watching, his phone is locked. And after class, this is how it works, because a lot of people just don't know what, when we say yonder pouches, they, the kids walk around with this then all day because that detachment is hard, too. This way, they have it. When they are able to unlock it at lunch or when they leave, they go by the magnet, they push it down, it's quick. It's because I think people thought, how does this work with 1,000 kids? It works that, that easy. And so then we also have the wall mounts up throughout the school. You just, again, there's, there's not words for how proud I am of them. It is literally locked now, so. As we're working student numbers, student enrollment, we do, we will have official, as you know, official student enrollment numbers come out the last Friday in September. We are, we are, when I say down, we are back to where we were before the influx last year that was not planned for. We are static with where we had originally planned to be last year. The numbers, we, like if you've been watching other, other schools in the media with enrollment numbers, the birth rates for this incoming kindergarten class, we knew this group would be somewhat lower, but it's always hard to project, especially in schools our, in our size, those in, say, the EST Conference area, because there's also a lot of movement right now in, you know, in our state and our country, and so it was, it's a little bit difficult. We were able to make some changes at Dakota Prairie over the summer that more aligned from our original budget to the final, knowing numbers at Dakota Prairie is where the, the largest number difference was. Our high school is right on, they actually are up a couple, middle school is up one, I think, Camelot's up. It's the elementary that goes right along with what the, unfortunately, what the birth rate numbers were telling us were coming. And our kindergarten registration numbers did kind of preview that, but you just don't know until it gets to be that time. And so Madera continues to grow that, and so our boundary work really needs to look at what those intentions we want to be for those years, knowing Madera is the grow, is really grew this year. And that's not to say Dakota Prairie and Hillcrest won't, but we just, that's our current, current situation. So we will make sure that the budget, although the sections at Dakota Prairie are too smaller than last year, which was what we saw happening over the summer with registration numbers going, so. Other than that. The last Friday in September, so we still, we still have a little time. And Infinite Campus had a summer of complete turnover. All of the Infinite Campus has been updated, which, when it updated across the state, it did not pull in any of our special education student files with it. So we have to manually enter those, which isn't a big deal in enrollment for students in seats from Brookings School District, but any student, say a homeschool student or a private school student who comes and receives special services, that percentage of enrollment would not have moved over. We have to manually enter that. And so we're still making sure those are accurate and getting those, those won't be all in for another week. So, but all indication is we're back down to where that number was projected to be for the 24, 25 school year before that increase that we had last year. And, and I don't know if you want me to go through the, any of that facility work from Keith at this time, but the report's good. One thing we are, as, as people know, we did, you did give the go-ahead for the science renovations, and that's for the whole science area. And we have been so blessed in the fact that we're still making progress with the off-site science lab, and so that we don't have to build that more specialized lab for our students in the, in the higher-level coursework or groups such as theirs, such as Science Fair to work in. And so we, we're taking a harder look. There's restrooms in the middle of the science area that could use a little work, and to say the least. And so we're working on what will cost if we added that into the work, also knowing that as our high school has been renovated and added on to over the years, the piping, especially infrastructure, much like the HVAC, did not always increase at the size of capacity. And so like our HVAC and cooling unit, the, the capacity of the pipes, the sheer size of the pipes at places might not be large enough. And so we're having them come in and do some of that work here in the next couple of weeks because we might want to. When you're, when you're doing renovations such as the science labs, those are the most expensive square-footage renovations you can do in a school because of the amount of piping and cabinetry, that sort of thing. So if we're going to already be digging all that up and potentially doing something with one set of restrooms, we should be getting that full assessment of the piping infrastructure before that. And so I'm waiting to get some of that information here in the next couple of weeks. And then I would bring it to you, and you could make that decision.
Any questions for Dr. Schultz? Okay, then we'll move on to the high school report. And the only thing I would add there is the comments from the survey of the teachers, they're also very impressed with how well the yonder pouches are going. And I was going to point out, while you were speaking, my wrist started to buzz. I want to tell everyone that also their smartwatches go into the yonder pouch, as well as the AirPods. So they're really kind of device-free, which I think is great. Okay, any other comments on the high school report? Middle school report? Anything to add there? One thing I noted there is they're kind of doing an increased incentive for behavior to try to add on to what they're doing with already with the PBIS system. I thought was a positive. Dakota Prairie? Always appreciate the photos, they had some fun photos. I like the fact that I think, I think it might be Mrs. Olgaard that's reading the book about neurodiversity in the classroom for the students, and I think that's an awesome thing to see that students are learning more about neurodiversity as well as our teachers.
And that is one of our pillar work, one of the areas of our pillar work. We have the two main that we are still working on for the strategic plan, one being a great place to learn, and that is that piece of how are we, how are we assessing whether or not all of our work on the neurodivergent learner and the neurodivergent environment is working? And so we are really looking to some of our outside consultants to help us with that, how do we make sure it's working? Because we're doing things like that because we have that in literacy as our two main, but we want to make sure that what we're doing is working. But there's been some amazing things with those neurodivergent learning spaces as well, so.
Madera report, anything to add there? And then I also, Bobcat Academy, they're off to a great start. They have 86 learners, so that's awesome. Our Activities Director report, kind of go through these quickly here. Anything there? Or I forget, I forgot the Director of Academic Services, Special Programs. We've all read through these. If we have anything to add, appreciate all of the work that our administrators put in. Again, Director of Activities, look like we're off to a great start with the number of students enrolled and involved in our activities. The next is Child Nutrition Administrator Report, anything to add there?
Um, the next is child nutrition administrator report, anything to add there? Director of instructional technology, when I looked at that, I thought Jason had a busy summer. There were a lot of updates up to technology over the summer. Transportation, director of transportation. Might want to point out to people that are listening that we, we are certain, our transportation system is serving over nine hundred and fifteen students in our district. Director of business services, we'll hear more from Stacy in a bit, do you have anything you want to add Stacy?
Biggest thing is that the annual report was accepted by the state and we're doing audit prep, audit is three weeks from Wednesday.
That's awesome. Director of facilities, Dr. Schultz shared some things from our director of facilities. And then finally, um, human resources administrative report, that was submitted by Laura. And I don't have anything, anyone have anything to add there? Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Um, and the first item on the consent agenda is approval of our minutes from the August eleventh and September second special meeting. So August eleventh was our regular meeting and September second was the special meeting. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Just one motion for all those things.
Yep, and then the salary listing for this girl, yes, should also included there. I move approval of the consent agenda. Here we have a motion and a second. We're ready for the question. Motion passes. The next item is the annual review of the open meeting laws. And this is required by our South Dakota Legislature, so each of us has the booklet conducting the public's, or the conducting public's business in public, which talks about the open meeting law. We're all familiar with that, we do have some on the back table. For any of you that are interested, I would encourage those of you that are here as students to pick one of those up. Because it really shares with you what needs to be conducted in public and what things should be done or can be done in executive session. And what we always hear about is what are the things that are done in executive session? That that's a lack of transparency. Well, there are multitude of things that are, can be done or should be done in executive session. And that, that are, they are listed, there are over uh, ten different items that should take place. And most of those are to protect individuals, protect personnel, protect students, those kinds of things. So please take a look at that if you'd like to have, it has, it kind of in a question format, answer format, so it's very easy to read and follow. But it shares with you why those, uh, why some of those things are held in an executive session. Okay, and does the board have anything they want to add or any questions regarding things? If there are three or more of us gathered, we have to announce that we are at an event where three or more of us might be present, even though it may not be a board meeting. So for example, tomorrow night, we're meeting with the city council, our members of the city council regarding um, a change in elections. The legislature passed a change in the election law. So we talked tonight, only two of us are going, so we don't have to declare that. But that was one of the things we were prepared to do, is to declare that at three or more of us maybe in the, meeting at that, at that time tomorrow night. But there will only be Wes and I, so we don't have to do that, but that's an example of how that works. Anything else we should add there, um, Stacy or Summer?
I think the big thing is, I know Kelly has mentioned this recently, but um, it also mentions about how this is a meeting in public, not a meeting of the public.
Right, that's right. So it's a meeting in public, so the others can attend, but it's not a meeting of the public where they would be part of the meeting. Thank you for sharing that.
Would you just say to them, we can declare a special meeting if there were things that we wanted to have public conversation around? And so there isn't, there is time for public input every meeting and then we can declare a meeting where we're just having discussion about specific items, that's something that we can do as a board.
I would like to add too, I've just had a couple of emails recently, uh, we love public comment here, but I've had some people reach out or come kind of for the first time with an issue here in front of us and usually ethically, we don't respond to them, so we don't have a back and forth. If there's something that you would like addressed in a board meeting, contacting us before a meeting, all of our emails and phone numbers are listed. And then we can add it to a meeting so we can discuss it publicly.
Okay. To make a motion regarding the fact that we've. I need a motion indicating that we have reviewed the open meeting laws. In a second.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we've done our annual review of the open meeting laws and I'll second that.
Okay, we're ready for the question. Okay, the next item is the approval of the SDSU welding course memorandum of agreement. And this is not a new agreement, it covers the twenty-twenty-five through the twenty-twenty-seven school years. And it pertains to a course Agad four ninety-one, which is taught by Josh Johnson, our agriculture education teacher at the high school. And it's done onsite at B H S at the high school. So we just need a, an approval of that M O U. So can I have, entertain a motion to approve the M O U?
I move approval of the M O U.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the SDSU welding course memorandum of understanding. We're ready for the question. Motion passes. The next item is approval of the revisions made to the Gap site agreement. And Gap is the great after-school place, we have an agreement with them so that they can hold sessions at several of our facilities, including here at Dakota Prairie. May I have a motion to accept the revisions that have been made to that agreement?
I move approval.
A second?
Oh, second?
Okay, we have a blue motion and a second to approve the revisions made, so now that opens up time for discussion. And there have been some questions regarding um, the use of the kitchen at the facilities. There is a, our nutrition director um, has had some concerns regarding kitchen access. So the, they have reached a verbal agreement on the following changes. Limiting Gap's kitchen access to only the dishroom and the three compartment sink with specific guidelines for usage and billings. And these changes aim to improve safety, security and cleanliness in the school kitchens, which our nutrition director is responsible for. So any discussion regarding this agreement?
Just wondering from kind of our information we received today, what the um, what they're still wanting, what Gap is still wanting access to, because I saw that they're, they do have a refrigerator. So just, because obviously my, I just want to be able to provide kids that are in our schools full ability to have whatever snacks they want and research and fresh fruits and veggies if they want them. And so it looks like they have a fridge and it looks like, so I just didn't know what else.
Yeah, I think there's maybe a misconception on the fact that the, the, like the equipment and things in the kitchens are not, you know, we aren't budgeting for those. Those are federal dollars and Laura has act, Laura has to meet criteria in order to use federal dollars to purchase those, so it's not as simple as saying.
Throw your lunch in our fridge.
Or you get to decide guidelines in there, you really don't. You don't have any control over those and Laura has to be the one that signs off that we're doing those things. For example, like um, if we're a peanut, if, if that kitchen um, is, if, if we have things that are not allowable under those guidelines in that space. If Gap is doing that, that hurts the school district and those are things that usually is a lot of why schools won't give much access to the cooking and food preparation space, which is different than say um, sinks, that sort of things, or having a fridge. I mean, the fridge could be in any of the, any of the spaces.
Do you know what else they are, like to be able to provide, like what are the missing pieces?
On Wednesdays, they used to do a, a warm lunch or a warm snack.
Okay.
And some of them.
Okay.
And so the, I, the way I understand it, and again, I'm, I have to stay, I have to remove myself from some of these and allow administrators to do, to do their job, but in this case, like what was given to you back in March. It was the removal of being able to do food prep from Gap in those spaces. Because our food service director really didn't, she, it's not her recommendation, we allowed food prep. And the only time, the way I understood it, food prep needed the warm, like a oven, that sort of thing is on Wednesdays when they have more time. And so um, I think that's where some of the disconnect comes. And so when the original contract came out and was approved on our end, then there was a meeting last month between Gap and our food service director. I think it's the first time they had ever even met each other. Um, and so that, you know, getting to that common, common ground of, of being able to use some of those spaces, but um, our food service director still would like to limit that food prep piece and the oven use because again, the way those things are purchased, it's not district dollars purchasing those. So the way I understand it, that's the biggest thing.
Got it.
But, so as we work forward for next year, um, I, there certainly could be a board rep on those meetings or committees if you would like. Otherwise, I've really about them.
Just making sure Gap knows we still want them in our spaces.
I'm a Gap mom.
We want to collaborate and if there's other ways to make sure they can get what they need done or access to microwaves or something else, I don't know their whole um, piece. I just had um, read a little bit about their um, working with the dietetics interns at SDSU and providing some of those snacks. That, do they have access? Um, and, and they do. So I don't think that there's anything that they don't have access to, to keep doing the um, dietetic internship nutrition piece and all of those things too.
No, I agree.
I just was wondering sort of what else they were looking for from us, so I didn't, I didn't see that, so.
I don't have that information, I think the email that was sent to you this morning, you know, they met two weeks ago and I thought there, there was the decision.
That they, that we were in a good space.
And so that was the first information that came after the two groups met for the updated amendment, so.
Okay, got it. Yeah, so Gap can just let us know what, what they are still looking for, I guess.
Yeah, I imagine it's to be able to do the warm meal prep on Wednesdays. And they can still dialogue, the, the two directors can still dialogue about how they want to move forward, they have some changes they want to make. And work with Laura.
Yeah.
Work with Laura, because she's the director. Okay, are we ready for the question?
Make sure for the public that, I mean, we're not saying Gap's not gonna have snacks.
Yep.
You know, just to make sure, sometimes people hear like, oh my gosh, my kid's not gonna get a snack, so they'll still have snacks, it's just right.
And they can have fresh snacks because they have access to refrigerator.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yep, it's the warm piece.
Right. I'm a big snack person, Dr. Schultz, you just gotta make sure that there are snacks available. I'm just teasing you. No. But I want to make sure kids have snacks.
I couldn't tell you what that snack is, to be honest.
I want to improve your snacks, Dr. Schultz.
No, you do.
I need to get a fridge in your office.
Are we ready for the question? All right, Stacy, we're ready for the vote. Okay, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our revisions that were made to the high school learner handbook. And the handbook was attached with a new language highlighted in yellow. And um, I have a motion to approve first and then we'll discuss what those changes are, so can I?
I'm moving approval of the handbook for the high school.
Can we have a second? Okay, so moved and seconded to approve the changes to the high school handbook. If you, you know, took a look at the yellow language, which I'm sure all of you did, one was the attendance contract, um, where we're really making it uh, a little bit firmer in terms of absences at the high school. After ten absences, that's considered excessively absent, so there's a little contract that they're gonna sign or a small contract that's there for them and their parents to be aware of. And I think that is already being handled very well. The same guardian that called me this morning said the high school student was told after three absences, you better be careful because you only have ten. And so the student head was not really aware of that, so that really helped. And then the other part that were the changes were with the electronic devices. And I think that's probably just evolved as they've used the, the yonder pouches. I noticed it said they have to bring their pouch to class, so that must have been something that has happened or that they, they were made aware of at the school. And I think those were the only two really big uh, changes. I'm, I'm not sure if you, if you noticed the grading scale piece, this was something brought to our high school administration last year and it kind of, it didn't go, the research, it didn't get dug into the way it really needed to and, and so that was one of the things we put as a goal to, we had to look at this and really understand what, um, what our current grade point average, the percentage that connects with it, what the outcome of that was when students go to apply at, at universities and post secondaries. Because that was just really important information to get out. It gets very misconstrued, I think, right away when people hear, we're gonna change, we're gonna change what the GPA number is that goes with the letter grade. Instantly, you will hear um, conversations about rigor or things like that, which have nothing to do with what we're, what they did with the change. And this, the change is small, it's only in the areas of the A's. And that, if, if you imagine when your child is, I kind of, I kind of use the analogy of, and I, honestly, I didn't work through this, our, our, our high school administration did this on their own this fall. I just needed us to really dig into it and look at it and understand what was being asked and what we were saying. Because we, it just felt a little short um, in that, in that work last year. But it's, it would be like saying you're gonna run the four hundred meter dash and the four hundred yard dash and whoever wins, wins, the, wins the scholarship to go run the quarter in college, they're different. And so, and which, I know that's kind of a terrible analogy, however, if a student in, in, from one district is getting a ninety-two percent and that ninety-two percent gives them four point oh in one grading scale and in another grading scale, it gives them three point eight seven and they're both applying for the scholarship at SDSU. The student who is getting the three point eight seven went to the bottom of all of those students who were gonna get a four point oh for that same grade. It doesn't have anything to do with how they got that same grade. And so when you was consider to um, in, in South Dakota, at least as of last year, students who attended Sioux Falls and Rapid City, which is a large number of the total outgoing seniors applying for scholarships and admissions, they were on a ten-point scale. If our students were applying at the same time and ours was not that same, our students would go underneath them with virtually the same grades. So we just needed to look at it and go, are we okay with this? And maybe we are, but we, I wanted a commitment to looking at it and really looking at it. And this is, um, I, when I saw that it came through, I thought, well, that's what I would have done, I would have started here at least. So I was really happy to see that that team dug into it, looked at this and just kind of made that step. There's unintended consequences from what we had. That as a, as parents, as staff, you know, we, we were able to see that it did put our, our students at a bit of a disadvantage.
Yeah.
So um, that's the other piece that. That's on page thirty, I think, thank you for that explanation, because I know we had some comments or questions about that last year. Then if you will, scroll down again to page thirty-three, there is a um, new section in regards to invasion of privacy, inappropriate images and manipulated photos. And I think that's very important based on all the things we're seeing happening right now in the media, so they have taken a stronger stance there. Well, it's state law. And state law, yeah. This is state law. You cannot manipulate an image. At some point, they're even gonna say, maybe you can't just make stuff up and put it on there, even in words, but for now, it's just manipulating images. They're called deep fakes, which right away people go, what's that? But if you manipulate an image, even for the uh, purpose of embarrassing someone, um, making fun of them, it is against the law, it's against the law and we really want our students to know these things because um, sometimes it's fun, funny, but it's not and it's against the law. So we made sure to get those in all the handbooks just a little bit late.
I will also say when we're looking at the changes to this, I know a couple of other school board members have looked at these numbers. When you look at the numbers, especially coming out of Minnesota to schools doing the yonder pouches or similar policies to ours, the big things that they saw improvements in were bullying, especially using phones and that was a huge concern of students and teachers when we surveyed them, but also attendance improved and that usually connect. attendance improved, and that usually connects to a student, you know, having access to their phone to maybe fib to get out of class, and it lowers attendance, and attendance improved, and bullying also decreased. And all of those schools, within two years of them implementing these policies.
Great.
I'm just going to make one other comment. I really appreciate the high school digging into all the nuances of things, and just can see, and, yeah, bring the handbook back if you guys need a revision.
Yeah, that's great, they did that.
We, you know, do all of that in June, and it's really overwhelming as a board member to read 13 handbooks in June and understand the nuance of each of them. So our expectation is our administrators are okay coming back with things and, and looking at the nuances. So I really appreciate that work as a board member from the high school.
Good too. And for those of you that are education students in our audience, I would encourage you to go to the school district page, look under the school board agenda, you can click on tonight's agenda, and you can access that handbook, and you might want to take a look at that, especially if you're considering teaching high school students. Okay, are we ready for the question?
Or maybe don't, if they're still considering teaching high school.
Actually, I would encourage all of you to think of, I love teaching. Okay, so we're ready for the question, to accept the revisions.
I'll take away the motion, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the motion by Kelly and seconded by Terry. Yeah, it was way before the discussion, so we got this. This fly loves us here today.
I don't show, I don't show who made them, it doesn't show here.
It was Kelly and Terry.
Who in there?
It did. Our next item of, on the agenda is the 2025, 2026 memorandum of understanding for school resource officer services.
I move approval of the 25, 26 one-year contract for the school resource officer services.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and second for our school resource officer services memorandum of understanding. Any questions or concerns? Okay, we're ready for the vote. Motion passes. The next item, 10.6, approval of the Oldham-Ramona-Rutland reorganization dissolution plan, dissolution plan and supporting resolution. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move approval.
Second. Yeah, I just did that now, I think. Okay, do we have any discussion regarding this item? Your mic's not on, Les. Go ahead.
I can do that. So as you know, ORR is working through some building in bond issues and that sort of thing. When there was a, a group that I, I believe this is how it goes, in that piece of, that there was questions as to whether, how they became about to make decisions and have the vote, whether or not it was done correctly, whether or not that lawsuit could go forward from that group of the community. One thing that is happening now is in order for ORR to continue with some of that work, knowing there is that potential that it doesn't happen, that the school doesn't get built. The, the attachments that, I'm, I'm hoping that you received in an email from Amanda, it's been a while now, quite a while, but what they had to do then is they, into the state, they had to reorganize, so the whole district boundary for that Oldham-Ramona-Rutland school district, they have to take all of that land and redirect it, reorganize it, redistrict it to the surrounding school districts. Brookings has a very small area of it, it's very, it's very minor, but each district that has land that will be redistricted to them.
Basically, we're adjacent or touching kind of that land.
Yes, exactly. We, you have to approve it in order for ORR to be able to move forward. And really, this was, their board did not approve the first draft, so you would have received it, I believe, a month earlier, but now that we did get it, and those were those two additional attachments that came out from Dawn, the final one has been approved now by the board and DOE, and now each district at their September meeting will approve it.
Do we have a second on that? And Terry seconded, Terry's, Terry's seconded Stacy, so. Okay, any other questions?
Increase of 3,000 students, I'm kidding. Right, at least.
Maybe three, maybe. All right, we're ready for the question.
Deb, I want to, I want to clear up one thing that I said that was incorrect. We have to pass it before they can send it to DOE to be approved, and I believe I said DOE has already approved it. They need us to do it first, otherwise they can't send it to DOE for the approval for them to keep moving forward.
Yeah, basically, just our school district boundary will change a little bit in that area. I'm just really simplifying it.
That's exactly it.
So that, that box around us will change a little bit, so if you live there, you might be in our district.
Yeah, exactly.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the memorandum of understanding between Rising Hope Counseling, LLC, and the Brookings School District. And this we have done, renew every year. There are counselors from the Rising Hope that come into our school and work with some of our students and families. Did anyone have, well, we need a motion. So moved, second?
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding. Any questions that you have? It's pretty standard, we, it's just a renewal basically every year. Okay, we are ready for the question. Motion passes. The next item is 10.8, approval to appoint Michelle Vandewerdt and Laura Garretts as the Title IX coordinators for the Brookings School District.
So moved.
Everybody's been moved and seconded to appoint these two employees as our Title IX coordinators. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready for the vote. Motion passes. The next item is an approval to reschedule our October 27th board meeting to October 20th. And this is a workshop meeting, and it's, the reason we were looking at rescheduling it is there's an event on campus that several people here need to attend or would like to attend, and so that is the reason for requesting this rescheduling. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Oh, and I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reschedule that meeting to October 20th.
Deb, the, the main objective of that meeting is for all board members to be updated and be given a summary on the work we've done for the science renovation. So our architect from Co-op will be in attendance to share the work that we've done with our teachers, with the, the group, to, those basic schematic design phase is done and ready. So it's kind of fun.
And at a workshop meeting, that's usually what takes place, is a discussion, right, regarding an issue that we have to address. Okay, we are ready for the question. Motion passes. At this time, we entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to South Dakota law 125-2 subsection 3. Second? It's been moved and seconded that we move into executive session. Oh, we don't need a motion.
There won't be a motion after.
Oh, yeah, just for the public to know, there will not be any motions made following the executive session, so you don't have to hang around if you would, to hear any kind of further, further action. All right, we're ready for the vote. Okay, that ends our business meeting, and we'll move into executive session. We'll take about a five-minute break, we'll see if these students have any questions for us. [laughing]. Yeah, really.